Good evening. At this time, if you would please silence your phones and be advised that we will have these proceedings recorded. If you desire to address the City Council during this meeting, please complete a request to speak form available at the entrance and present it to the City Clerk. You will be called upon during public comment. So at this time, I will call to order and convene a special meeting of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace for August 7th, 2018. If you would, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag.
Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Henderson.
Present.
Councilmember Hesse.
Present.
Councilmember Wilson.
I am here.
Mayor Procham Robles.
Present.
Mayor McNabbow.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll go to public comment, and this is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items on this agenda tonight only. Generally, our public comment is for items not on the agenda, but this will be the time to speak on our agenda. And so if there are any requests to speak at this time, I would like to have them. Thank you. We'll begin with Jeffrey McConnell.
Jeffrey McConnell, 217-58-Wallnut. While I walked in, I asked why there were so many uniforms here, and they said they were here to answer questions, so I guess I got a few questions. I'm sure they could handle it. I was looking at this list here of all the calls that they have for 11 months, and some of it's pretty obvious, some of it I don't fully understand. I'm just, one of the questions was how many of these included multi-city alarms outside of Grand Terrace or the, on the freeway, which is part of the state? Also, I've heard them many times talk about the state of equipment, state-of-the-art equipment they have, and I just, assuming their computers are state-of-the-art, what's involved $157 in admin fees? What exactly does that include? Because if it's all done computerized, I don't see why it's so high. I own multiple parcels in the city, so that's going to cost me well over $600 bucks. And the other question was, I've read that takes 25% of the people in the district in parcels. To put it on the ballot, does the City Council have the power to put it on the ballot? I'm guessing no, but I thought I'd ask the question anyway. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Madam City Clerk, I have these numbered, starting with two, three, and four. Was there one that's missing?
We have a letter that needs to be read into the record.
Is that number one?
Correct.
Okay, we'll come back to that then. Next is Bobby Forbes.
Thank you. Good evening, Bobby Forbes, 11850 Burns Avenue. Item two, regardless, I don't have an agenda in front of me, I'm sorry, it was up there.
Anything on the agenda.
Okay, so, since this has come up with the Fire Department and the solution to the Riverside Highland Water versus the City of Grand Terrace, however you want to say it, I feel that it is the wrong time for us to have on the ballot a supplemental tax or an additional tax to get us another sheriff. It is not that I don't believe we don't need one, we need more than one, but I think that the community will not support us if it is on a ballot after being hit with these other two issues. And I just think that it would behoove all of the work that we've done to remove that from this coming ballot and go about it in a different way. Either that the city, the staff, everyone figure out a way to make it happen so we can get another deputy in Grand Terrace somehow, or that I start another petition for next year, or we do something different, somehow figure out to get us another cop in town. Because we need it, and I'm not the only one that believes that. I might be the only one speaking up here off the cuff of saying, "We need one," but I see it every day. And most of you are on the local Facebook page, you see what's going on in town, there's crime happening here that could be prevented if we had another deputy in sight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes.
Good evening, Jeremy Rivera of Van Buren. Let's see, we'll start with number one, because that's why we're pretty much all here, for the Fire Department. That is a lot of people here in Fire Department uniforms, maybe that's why we have to pay an extra $157 a year. Love you guys, but too many chiefs, not enough Indians, and all those brand-new county vehicles out there, those new Ford Expeditions, man, what kind of gas do those things take? I drive a Prius, Mr. Duffy drives a Prius too. We're Prius Brothers, he doesn't know it, but we are. He's laughing over there. I don't like any new tax. I think I'm with a couple of you up there. I don't know if you guys get to vote if this is a resolution tonight for you to take action upon, but as a City Council, I would like you not to vote for it if that's voted. I know it's probably going to pass, these medical calls that are taking place, you know, why aren't we charging the residents? If an ambulance, an AMR shows up to my house to take me because I'm in cardiac arrest to Kaiser, I have to pay AMR $1,500. That's pretty much the standard rate for an AMR ride to Kaiser. So if a paramedic rescue unit has to come out of Station 38 to come to my house and give me an AKG to see, right, are we at Station 38? I don't know what station, I thought it was 38, maybe I read wrong. Why don't they charge me $1,000? 23? Okay, 23. Station 23 has to come to my house, charge me a $1,000 service call, and I'll pay it, or my medical insurance will pay it. If my house is on fire, charge me what that service call costs and charge it to the insurance company. Why do I have to pay an extra $157 a year, or 43 cents a day? I could be feeding a kid in Africa for 43 cents a day. It's just ridiculous. It's going to get so high in taxes that no one's going to want to move into our city. The other thing I had is, like, we have the apartments, we have lots of apartments here, the Highlands, the high-dollar residential living. So is that one parcel, and they pay $157? Because that really sucks, that's like 1,000 apartments, they should, each unit should have to pay $157. And is there something that we can work out with the county that each apartment unit's paying their fair share? Because each one of those is a resident, even though it's one parcel probably, each one of those is a call. So we need to work this out a little bit more, you know, Supervisor Ramos, he does a lot, Chairman of the Tribe, Supervisor here, running for a state office, I think, so, you know, we need to get Mr. Ramos involved and maybe back down on some of that county fire spinning, because those are new vehicles out there, brand-new vehicles. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Are there any other requests to speak? Okay, I have Bobby Forbes for Johan Gallo, but there's a letter that will be read. Okay. And Mr. Rivera, did you want to comment on the police?
All right, so now we're back to the police again. Oh, jeez. What are we going to do with this? Madam Mayor, you had a suggestion of cuts last time I was here, I know, I took a little vacation, sorry, it was too hot here, had to go up to Oregon. It's still hot. We have to get this police thing under control, you know, Lieutenant Wolf came up here, we've talked, we've, we got all this stuff going, and here's the, here's my thought process. It takes two to three hours to book somebody in West Valley. We don't have a deputy in the city. I call for a deputy, it's a 15-minute response time, someone's breaking into my house. They murder my wife. I think the city's going to be liable for that, because your lieutenant told you you needed a cover deputy. And I'm going to tell you right now, if I call a deputy and someone gets killed in my house, and there's not a deputy in the city because they're busy booking somebody, I will be suing the City of Grand Terrace. Because you are liable, you've been put on notice that we don't have enough police. And I think the City Council needs to direct the City Manager to find the money. That's why he makes $215,000 a year, find the money. Otherwise, anybody that's a salaried employee that makes over $50,000 a year, 10% pay cut effective immediately. These are things that need to be addressed. We need to start thinking about our needs and not about our wants. So it needs to be taken care of. The mayor tried to cut some things out of the budget, you guys, I don't even think she got a second. So, I don't know what we're going to do. I'm willing to work on it, Ms. Forbes, myself, Johan Gallo, you know, we're all here to help and work, and I'll put in my time and my footwork and anything we need to do, but the city's been put on notice by the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department that we do not have enough service for police. And the city's going to be liable, and it'll have to be settled. And the city will probably settle with me before we get into a trial. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Are there any other requests to speak? All right, Madam City Clerk, will you read the letter of correspondence that we received?
Dear Mayor McNabbow, City Council Members and Staff, I requested this letter be read at tonight's special meeting of the City Council of Grand Terrace, as I am unable to attend. I want to discuss the proposal by the San Bernardino County Fire Department District regarding their presentation to increase their fees that will result in a parcel tax increase to the residents of Grand Terrace. This will have a direct impact on our ballot measure that would have sought residents to vote to increase their parcel taxes to enable Grand Terrace to increase the budget dollars for the Sheriff's Department budget and add staffing. Our group has worked extremely hard to create and drive a petition to get residents to vote for the parcel tax increase. When that failed, we worked with the City Clerk and staff to develop the ballot initiative, all with the intent of getting voters to the polls in November to vote for a parcel tax increase with all monies going to fund additional coverage by the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department. Unfortunately, our timing couldn't have been worse, especially now that the San Bernardino County Fire Department District is going to increase our parcel taxes in the amount of $157.26, effective this year with increases every year. We anticipate that now that Grand Terrace and Riverside Highland Water Company have resolved their franchise fees, residents can expect those costs to be pushed down to the residents' utility fees. Based on everything that's transpired since we began our initiative to increase the city's budget for the Sheriff's Department, we now find ourselves in the unfortunate position where we must ask the mayor, City Council, and the City Clerk to withdraw our ballot initiative at this time. We cannot in good conscience ask voters to vote for another increase given these new developments. We would also task the mayor, council members, the City Manager, Finance Department, and our City Attorney to review the fees charged by San Bernardino County for all the services they provide. We see a trend where cities are being given cost increases and need to determine if the fee schedules are in line with other counties for these services. Some increases are to be expected, but I predict you will find some fees duplicative and that cities may be paying more than their fair share of the county's costs. I would also expect the City Manager and staff to look at making serious budget cuts and get down to the list of need-to-have and eliminating nice-to-have costs. These funds can then be shifted to the Sheriff's Budget. In closing, we cannot live with the status quo. The city staff must reallocate budget dollars to support the increased costs for the Sheriff's Budget. There's nothing more important to all of us than the safety of our residents and the sheriffs who put themselves at risk every day to serve and protect us. We will continue to closely monitor your decisions and actions to ensure you're moving in the direction we need to accomplish this sooner rather than later. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Johan Gallo.
All right, thank you. And since that's the last item, I will close public comment, move on to new business, the first of which is annexation of parcels within the City of Grand Terrace into FP5 service zone of the San Bernardino County Fire District. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager. Mayor and Council, tonight's presentation will go over the history of the fire protection services within City Grand Terrace, the governing board responsible for fire protection services, funding of fire protection services, cost of service, and then a presentation by the service provider. Tonight, we have with us Mark A. Hartwig, he's the Chief of the County Fire Department. So the history of fire protection. So fire protection services were traditionally provided by the county through County CSA Service Area 38. That happened before and after the actual incorporation of the city in 1978. It was actually contract services provided by County Department of Forestry, and so they basically provided the services on a contract through San Bernardino County for CSA 38. Governing Board, there were comments mentioned earlier today about what the City Council could and could not do. When the city incorporated in 1978, it incorporated without the fire protection powers, and that actually remained the responsibility of the CSA 38, which ultimately went into the County Fire District. So the County Board of Supervisors sits as the San Bernardino County Fire District Board, and they are ultimately the ones that are responsible for protection of fire services. The county disbanded the fire CSAs and moved to create one county-wide fire district service within the county, with the county personnel. In 2005, 2007, the city became a part of the County Fire District. So funding for the fire protection services. So it's funded by property taxes, it's funded directly by the citizens' property taxes. So 10% of the 1% ad valorem tax goes directly to the County Fire to fund fire protection services in Grand Terrace. So what I mean by ad valorem tax looks like this. So if you have a house that's valued at $387,000, there's a 1% ad valorem property tax that would equate to about $3,870. So of that 1%, 10% of that would go toward County Fire right now. That's the way, that's existed, what's happened today. So each parcel, each property in Grand Terrace is actually charged an ad valorem tax, and based on the 1%, then the 10% of the 1% goes directly to County Fire to support and to fund County Fire Protection Services. So the overall ad valorem value in Grand Terrace is $1 billion. And of that $1 billion, we have 10%, or 1% of ad valorem taxes would be about $1,000, about $1 million a year annually for fire protection services in the City of Grand So County Fire estimates costs for service in Grand Terrace as approximately $2.2 million, which leaves a subsidy of approximately $1.2 million annually. And so what that really means is basically that if the cost, $2.2 million to provide fire protection services, the county's only receiving $1 million, so there's a difference of $1.2 million that needs to be recovered. And traditionally, that's been covered through, if those numbers are correct, that's traditionally been recovered through the county's general fund. So the County Fire District has come up with a method which they believe will help end that subsidy. And how they plan on doing is they annex the city into an FP5 service zone. And so basically, there's a health and safety code that allows for a fire protection district to raise money, to generate money, to cover their overall cost of operations. And so what will see happening is the county has an FP5 service zone, and what they will do is they will annex the city into that service zone and then charge every parcel within the city $157.26 on top of the existing ad valorem property tax. And so how does that process work? So there's been a hearing set for October 16th, 2018, at the County Fire District. And what will happen is the county in the end of September, end of, I'm sorry, end of August, early September, will send a notice out to property owners that are in the fire protection district. And so 25% of those property owners with 25% of the value will be required to protest if the annexation is then to go for a vote. So I want to be clear on that, it's not only the City of Grand Terrace, it's every community in which they're going to be annexing into the Fire District. And of that, 25% of those property owners with 25% of the value must protest in order to get the item to go on the ballot. And that would not be on the ballot in November, they've not reached that deadline. But if, and if the protest is not achieved, the parcel assessment will be implemented. And I list here parcel assessment. We talk about parcel tax, because of the way this measure is implemented, it's considered an assessment and not a tax. So, but if 50% of the property owners with 50% of the value protest, will be a successful protest, then the item would be withdrawn and not moved forward. So there's a couple options here. As I said before, if 25% of the property owners with 20% of the value protest, then it goes on for a ballot, for a vote of the people. But if 50% of the property owners with 50% of the value are successful in the protest, that means writing a letter and sending it in, based on the letter that comes to your house, then you would, you would then, you would then be successful, and then the item would be removed, and there would be no vote, it would just be done, there would be no parcel tax or no parcel assessment implemented. So with that background information, I now am going to invite the Fire Chief, Mark A. Hartwig, to provide a presentation for the county.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. My name is Mark A. Hartwig, the Fire Chief and Fire Warden for the County of San Bernardino Fire District. And good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. We're, I just want to start by saying, we, we're really here as kind of a last resort for the Fire District. And we're going to walk through some slides, some of it will be duplicate, but I want to let you know, we don't take it lightly when we come to the district and say that we need to expand what is essentially expanding a service zone that we have now to maintain or improve services, in our case, maintain services. It really is a last resort for us. Maybe one correction just off the top is that it isn't actually an annexation, the City of Grand Terrace has annexed its firepowers into the district long before I was the Fire Chief here, along with the property taxes, the 10% ad valorem, as Mr. Duffy mentioned. So at the end of the day, we are expanding the FP5 service zone that exists today within the County Fire District. I want to give a real quick background, there's really 10 slides, and we're going to leave a lot of time for questions, but I want to run through these again, some of it is duplicate information. But we were formed in 2008 through a LAFCO process. We are comprised of four geographic service zones, and then we talked about FP5, there's actually nine other fire protection and paramedic zones within the county on top of the geographic service zones. The district is legally separate from the county, so we are a Fire District, the board is our Fire Board, but it is a separate legal entity within the county. This is the district boundary, we cover 19,000 square miles. We, we have also, in addition to the district boundaries, we have these fire protection, and that's the red areas that you see shaded within the county, the gray is the district, and then you have these special service zones as well, these fire protection and PM service zones. I'm going to zoom in a little bit. This is the valley service zone, so if it's in gray there and/or pink, not including PM1 and PM4, which are paramedic service zones on the mountaintop, everything else there that's in gray or red is in the valley service zone, geographic service zone. You'll notice Fontana is not listed there, Fontana is a Fire District and they contract with the County Fire District, but Fontana, the City of Fontana is not part of the Fire District, as opposed to the City of San Bernardino, which is part of the Fire District, and as you all well know, is part of FP5 as well. Our funding primarily from three sources, it's property taxes and contract revenue. And we have these 10 separate service zones, which also generate revenue, and then we have the MOU. And we'll talk a little bit about what the MOU is, the City Manager referred to it as the subsidy or the general fund dollars, and we'll talk about what that is. But that's actually through a contract with the county, very similar to the contracts we have with other cities within the county. What are the benefits of FP5? I talked to you about really an urgency for us here in the County Fire District. More than anything, it allows us to maintain the current service levels and address the current structural deficit. I'm going to take you into that in a little more detail here in the next slide, but more than anything, we want to make sure we can address the structural deficits so that we can continue to provide fire service in the communities that we serve today. It establishes a sustainable capital improvement and replacement fund. Today, we don't have one of those. We know what we need to replace, but we don't have a fund to do that. Reestablishes district reserves, our district, unrestricted district reserves in the County Fire District, over the seven years that I've been here, have gone from $43 million in unrestricted reserves. This year, we will have $1 million in each of the four service zones if everything is spent according to programming in our, in this year's budget. It establishes the consistent tax rate throughout the district, and so I mentioned that we have these PM1 through 4 and FP1 through 6, they're all different rates, and a lot of, not a lot of rhyme or reason to what the rates are as they're implemented throughout the county. And then, of course, I believe it allows the district to maintain the current service levels as we work with the county to maintain the MOU that they have with us. And again, the county enters into an MOU or a contract very similar to some of the other cities in the county. As you look at this slide, I think the key and what really brings us here today is this $11.9 million number that you see there. The MOU that we have with the county, which is the second column, comes to $17.4 million. They essentially take and write us a check and exchange money for services for $17.4 million. We take $12 million, $11.9 million out of our reserves this year is to run the organization, and that's the part that we can't sustain. We can't, we don't have another $12 million in our budget to, to continue to provide services next year. The total deficit, as you see there, by service zone, is $29.3 million, and we have a special assessment that we've talked about, this expansion of the FP5 assessment will only actually generate $26.9 million the way we estimate it throughout the county. So going into next budget year, even with FP5, we'll be going back to the board for at least $2.4 million in order to maintain the current service levels we have today throughout the district. Cuts that would be required if we had to balance the future budget, specifically next year, and we're already working on our budgets for next year, the shortfalls are very similar to what you saw on the previous slide, except for about $3 million this year that we didn't use to fund apparatus, fire engine replacement. And so we expect it to be about $32.3 million. Of course, again, as you know, we just passed our last budget, so we're just looking at very rough projections this year. We haven't talked about where we would cut our services, but it's about, as Mr. City Manager mentioned, it's about $2.2 million per engine company. And an engine company is simply one fire engine with three people on it in a station. I wish I could come to you tonight and say that we had three stations in the community of Grand Terrace, and let's have a discussion about whether or not we need to have three. You're very similar to a lot of communities throughout the county, you have one fire station with one fire engine with three people on it 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Now, we rely, of course, on a lot of our neighbors when we need them, and we also rely, of course, on our own district, especially here in the City of San Bernardino. The potential response time increases, we literally just took a computer modeling program that we have, a sophisticated program, and we would remove a station, we would pick up a station and remove it from the system, and it would generate response times, and as you take up those stations and remove them throughout our district, the increases in response times vary, obviously, in the North Desert, the Victor Valley area, and the Baker area, if you were to remove that station, there's over an hour increase, and the valley here, depending what station you move, it could be up to 13 minutes in added response time. We talked about the timeline, this is specifically what we're working from right now. June 12th, the Fire Board adopted a resolution to initiate the proceedings to expand the boundaries of FP5. Notices will be mailed, and I have a copy of a sample here of a notice. It'll, it'll be an envelope that will say service zone FP5. be an envelope that will say service zone FP5 expansion at the top on the return label, and our address. And then it will have your assessor's parcel number. We're working with the assessors to make sure that we mail a notice with the procedures to every property owner on title. So it won't just be one per property. It will be everybody who's listed as a title owner on the property. Those will go out September 14th. This is our first meeting. And so to the extent that we have a lot of people here, there's a lot of people working on this project, as you can imagine. And these are other duties as assigned for them. So they don't, I don't pay them extra for this, but I asked them to come tonight so that they could take notes and we can make the presentation better for the next community. Tomorrow, we'll be out in Yucca Valley and Wonder Valley. The day after that, we'll be out at Big River and Havasu. And we'll have about twenty-six of these throughout the County Fire District over the next two months, September and October. October 16th is a public hearing with the protest results. The Fire District law that the city manager was referring to is, does not require a protest process. Yet, we felt it necessary for the board to have some objective measurement of opposition and support to develop a protest process. So we really have adopted the LAFCO protest process, which, of course, we believe has stood the test of time. And so the protest results will be shared in a public hearing on October 16th with the possible adoption of the resolution to expand FP5 district-wide, depending on the results of that. This is a big undertaking for us. We know there's going to be a lot of questions and people are going to want a lot of information. And so as much as we can, we're getting out to the communities. But we've also highlighted it on our website. So our website is sbcfire.org, as you see at the bottom. And on the front page, it's a well-run and I think contained website. But I think one of the most important things we're going to be doing over the next couple of months is making sure people have access to this FP5 information. If you click that, you have the information that comes up on the right side of the screen here. And we also have a place for questions. We expect that the community will come up with questions that we haven't even thought of at this point, and we're ready to answer those questions. With that, that's all I have, Mr. City Manager. And I'm certainly available with my staff to answer any questions you might have.
Right. Thank you, Chief Hartwig. I'd like to start with some of the questions that came during public comment, and then I'll open up to my colleagues on the council to ask their questions.
Yes, ma'am.
So there was, our first speaker was asking about the calls that involve multi-cities or freeway or other, work in other jurisdiction. And I believe he was wondering if there was a way to cut costs, if there wasn't response to those types of situations.
Yeah, we don't believe so. We believe the best way to do that is to regionalize services, and we do that as best we can with the County Fire District. We don't believe, and I firmly, as your Fire Chief, don't believe we could go less than one station on a twenty-four-hour basis in the community of Grand Terrace. And it kind of addresses what we talked about earlier. If I felt like we could reduce staffing here, I think that would be a conversation. I don't believe that we can reduce staffing here. I think having one fire engine out of one station in this city is an appropriate level of staffing. And it does respond to calls on the freeway and occasionally outside the city limits. And of course, if that happens, we get reciprocal response in from other areas. And then when there are calls that require more than one fire engine, Grand Terrace gets its share as well.
Okay. There was also the request to understand more fully what goes into the admin fee?
I'm not really sure when it was referred to as the admin fee. There's an administrative overlay of the four service zones. And the administrative overlay, most of it, and I don't have the exact numbers on it, we can come up with that for you, is actually distributed out to the zones through special operations and also some of the shortfalls that we have in the zones. So for instance, if you noticed on the one budget slide where the MOU doesn't include any money for the valley service zone, it's because we've taken some of the fire administration funding, which also comes from property taxes. It's part of that ten percent. And it goes back to the service zones. And so I'm not really sure with the hundred and fifty-seven, but as you can imagine, we have administrative costs. We pool those costs as best we can, and then we send them out to the service zones. But you're only paying for one Fire Chief, and that's me. I'm the most expensive firefighter on the department. And my belief is you only need one Fire Chief for a department. And then, of course, we distribute those responsibilities down from there.
Okay. And then our second speaker was asking about the medical calls. And many times, the medical calls go to a couple of our healthcare providers here in town. Is there an opportunity to perhaps assess them for these calls?
We tried that. We did try some first response billing, not just over the last two years. And we found that unless you want to do hard collections, right now, commercial providers are the only ones that reimburse for first response medical care. So if you have a Blue Shield, a Blue Cross, we could submit a bill for our costs, whatever that might be, a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy dollars per call, and they will reimburse us. The problem is Medicare and Medi-Cal won't reimburse anything. And the self-pay or the non-insured, we don't really, we haven't had the stomach essentially to go after them and take them to small claims courts. So we call it soft collections. And with the soft collection policy that we had, it led to about a break-even. We were spending as much money collecting, running the program, than we're actually collecting money. So a lot of it has to do with payer mix. And quite frankly, the payer mix in the county was, I believe, too high in a Medicare or Medi-Cal. And some jurisdictions that have a higher commercial mix, it actually works. It makes money.
Okay. And then on the last question from public comment had to do with the apartments that we have in town. Does that count as one parcel? So our apartment complexes would each be assessed, the one fifty-seven?
Yeah, this is a, this is a parcel assessment, and it's not a benefit tax assessment. And the two differences are, if you're in a benefit assessment, then you, it's, the district regularly assesses the benefits that the parcel receives, and then the charge would be based on that benefit. And so we don't do it that way. It wasn't ever designed that way, and we continue to make it per parcel. And so as unfair as that might seem, we are essentially expanding a service zone that was designed that way to start with FP5.
Okay. And I believe that was the questions from public comments. So I'll open it to my colleagues for their questions. Are there questions of the chief? Councilmember Wilson?
I'd just like to get a clarification. According to what I can see here, we've got about a six percent assessed value increase, based on the information that we have from our consultant, which would mean to me that you guys get a portion of that as well as everybody else does. Everybody gets a cut. So if that's the case, you know, our 2017, eighteen net value went up, value change went up six percent. At least, that's what it's supposed to go. That means with that six percent and the five percent that's being proposed, we're talking about an eleven percent increase to our fire services. Has that already been considered? Or is that a soft item?
No, we know what it costs to provide service here, and we know what we generate in our ten percent ad valorem. So to the extent that that ten percent will increase when property values increase, we figured that into the figure that we shared with you. So the last figures we have, it's roughly a million dollars, maybe a million one at the very highest. And then we know that FP5 is estimated to generate roughly five fifty. So we know staffing alone at the fire station, on a three-person fire station, runs about one point six at the lowest, depending on the seniority of the people working there and where they are on the pay scale. It could go up to about one point eight or one point nine. It's about two point two to two point three million dollars to run a fire station. So it still puts us on the low side of what we expect to generate here in Grand Terrace.
Do you have any kind of personal knowledge about the county when they went through their little split on our take, whether they decided that some of the other folks were going to be able to crouch down instead of, you know, pulling up their money? Or, I mean, this, it's kind of necessary, you know? In the long run, they're supposed to determine budgets for everybody like you are. And believe me, you guys are great. It's just that each one gets a slice, and according to their needs, you guys prove yours, they prove theirs, and then everybody takes it out of our tailbone.
Yes, sir. We have a large city on the west end of the county that's at twenty-six percent that goes to the Fire District. And so for whatever reason, what we do know is this, when Prop 13 was passed, it froze those percentages at that level. And so we just, for whatever reason, we didn't have it as high as we should here. And so I think that's a good way to look at it. Unfortunately, it was frozen without us knowing exactly or contributing as much as it cost to provide that service.
If it gives anybody any solace, when we talk about Prop 13, you know, it's an interesting conversation, but I'll just make it really short. We only have about, I don't know, ten or fifteen houses in Old City that are still stuck in that Prop 13 gaposis. So it doesn't affect as much as everybody thinks it does. Because as a, as a community ages, those pieces of property get sold. They get reevaluated. Or maybe they go in and they do a wholesale rebuild, or heaven help us, they burn down. And they have to get reevaluated. So, you know, it's really coming down to the City of Grand Terrace, where a lot of communities are. That Prop 13 isn't a big bugaboo that everybody thought it was.
Yeah, the only thing that hurts us on Prop 13 is the percentage that was frozen at ten percent. But our revenue continues to increase as property values increase.
Sure. Okay, thank you for answering my question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Any other questions at this time? Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Chief Hartwig. I have a few questions. Some are connected, I think, and some are not. But my first question is, given the annexation that just occurred in the City of Upland, and I believe the City of Victorville and the City of Calamasa extricating themselves from the Fire District, does any of that impact your presentation and the need for additional subsidy from Grand Terrace residents?
No. And interesting, they actually didn't de-annex. They didn't, they actually just stopped the contract. And so fortunately, in the County Fire District today, we have very few contracts. City of Fontana and the City of Adelano, after Hesperia finishes their annexation process or in the protest process right now, and Victorville pulls out of the contract or essentially does not renew the contract, we're not in a position to have to rely on people renewing their contracts because every, almost everybody else now is a structural part of the district. And so the contract for services are interesting. We don't make anything, and they don't make anything off of us. And so a contract for service is cash monies for the service we provide. And so there is no, when we lose that money, we simply take the personnel from that contract and we distribute them throughout the Fire District. We're large enough that we have enough open positions that we can distribute that personnel. But there is no added cost passed on, if you will, to the remaining people in the district.
Okay, thank you. My second question, the City of Fontana formed a subsidiary Fire District and Fontana City Council serves as the governing board of that district. As part of that process, is there an economic benefit to the citizens of Fontana? Do they pay less, the same, or more as a result of the formation of the subsidiary district?
In the City of Fontana, they are on the high end. So they're in the twenty-two, twenty-three percent range of the percentage of the ad valorem of that one percent. So from a revenue standpoint, they're quite a bit better off than a community like Grand Terrace that's at ten percent. So what they did, it was a pretty simple exercise for them. They said, if we were to join the district, so when we were formed in 2008, would we actually contribute more money than it would cost for us to contract for those services? It was that simple from my perspective. They believed that they were generating more money in property taxes than it would cost for them to negotiate a contract with us. And so at that point, they made the decision to essentially contract with us for roughly, from what we can tell, about two million dollars less than they generate. Interestingly, Hesperia, which is also a Fire District, they're annexing into the district because they're paying, or it costs them about a million dollars more every year to provide the service than they're generating. And so it's really a matter of how much are you generating in property taxes or any other assessment, and how much would it cost for you to provide that service? And so, of course, in the community of Grand Terrace, if you were just to look at it on its face value, you would have roughly a million dollars with, on ad valorem, to provide fire protection. And that's very difficult on a full-time staffing with three full-time firefighters twenty-four seven to come anywhere close at a million dollars, unless you were to do something that, like we're doing, which is to either tax or expand a service zone.
Okay. My next question is, do you or your staff have an idea of the total assessed value of property in the Fire District and the total population in the Fire District? I'm trying to get a feel for the protest aspect of this. The fifty, excuse me, the twenty-five percent voters, twenty-five percent value, and fifty percent, and fifty percent.
Yeah, we believe that we'll need roughly fifty thousand protests countywide in order for us to, and it goes back to parcels as opposed to voters. And so we believe, based on the number of parcels in the County Fire District, that are not already part of FP5, remember, they won't, they will be excluded from the process. San Bernardino will not be noticed. They're part of FP5 today. And they pay that hundred and fifty-seven, I think this year it's a hundred and fifty-three, next year, could be as much as a hundred and fifty-seven dollars, depending on the board action. So there would be about fifty thousand protest votes.
So was the, is Grand Terrace contiguous to FP5?
I just pulled that up. They're not quite contiguous with FP5 currently. The city is right about Hunts Lane and Barton there. And so it is not contiguous currently.
Okay. And my last question, I think, at the moment is, you mentioned contract revenue. Could you define that for us, please?
Yeah. So currently, we have contracts with the cities of Victorville, Hesperia, Adelano, and Fontana. Fontana and Adelano just re-upped, I think Fontana just signed off for a twenty-year extension, Adelano a ten-year extension. And then Hesperia says we want to get out of the contract business and just join the district and give you a share of the, essentially, the revenue from the Fire District, the property taxes. And the City of Victorville said, we're going to pull out and start our own department. And so that's the contract revenue. And I would consider the MOU with the county, MOU or a contract, as part of that contract revenue.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. Other questions? Councilmember Hesse?
Thank you, Chief. I just want to know, where's all that money for the pancakes you guys been selling?
It does some really good work, as you know.
I thought we subsidized for that. One thing, I went to a League of Cities, and they had, I think it was Loma Linda Fire Department, they talked about AMR. And they're trying to, for their paramedic service, because I guess if the paramedics are called out and you take a patient to the hospital and there's no beds, the paramedic has to wait in the hallway with them. They could be up to like twelve hours also. And AMR is actually making a lot of money, and the paramedics or Loma Linda's not making anything. And I think they were going to go after AMR to subsidize some of that cost because AMR's not having paramedics in their ambulance. So we have basically the same problem here in San Bernardino County?
Yeah, I would say that's a countywide issue right now. And the, it is a responsibility of the county, not the Fire District, to provide ambulance service. And the county can discharge that responsibility a number of different ways for exactly. They chose to contract with the private ambulance company. The private ambulance company that we currently have is a publicly, stock-traded, share-held corporation that operates on profit. We've made the case because the County Fire District today provides ambulance services in the areas that don't make money. Essentially, the county subsidizes the Fire District in the areas that don't make money in the ambulance service because in the Lucerne Valley, they need an ambulance, quite frankly. But they don't run enough calls to pay for the cost of providing that. In the urban areas, they contract with a private ambulance company, but the unit hour utilization is so high that there's quite a bit of money to be made in the ambulance business.
Can't they put a part of the contract that they're required to have a paramedic on ambulance for, you know, they're making money. They could afford to have a paramedic instead of letting our resources sit at the hospital?
Yes, sir. I think that's, that's one of the issues we run into as they run out of units. They staff more and more ambulances without a paramedic, so it's a BLS service. One of the reasons we put, we cross-train our firefighters as paramedics is to make sure that regardless of what happens- sure that regardless of what happens with the private business, is that when you dial or the public dials nine-one-one, they're going to get a paramedic on their piece of equipment with all the equipment that they need. They might have to wait a while for an ambulance to transport them, but they're going to have the life-saving equipment that they need.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Could you speak a little bit about the different rates in the different districts during your presentation? You brought that up, and...
It's pretty crazy.
And, and I had a feeling you wanted to tell us more about that, so would you please tell us more?
Well, I think it gets right along to what some of the, the, kind of, uh, eyebrow wrinkling that's been going on is, um, why, for instance, does a community like Grand Terrace only, and now to the taxpayer, they're still paying the one percent, so, but why did the fire district, when that was, that share was being divvied out? Um, I know that if I went back to any one of those, um, um, names on the, the bar graph that was shown by the city manager, nobody's going to give me a bigger portion, and yet, it is what it is. So, we've learned to provide this service, and yet, what we've realized is, um, some communities at a twenty-five, twenty-six percent actually generate enough revenue to cover their costs. Um, the ones that have a ten percent or an eight percent are relying on the county board to either enhance those services through the MOU, and I say enhance, because we're talking about entire communities that have one fire station. I don't call that an enhancement of service, I call that basic service, but, and then, um, the FP's, um, those are all voter-approved special tax areas, essentially, um, and so, um, they, um, uh, they actually, uh, came up with their own idea. For F, for FP5, for instance, the community of Hellendale and Silver Lakes, you might be familiar with it, uh, just outside of Victorville, they said, "We know we only generate enough property taxes to get a, a, a part-time person on every day to answer the phones. If we wanted to get a fire engine in the community of Hellendale, how much would it cost us?" And we did a simple c- calculation, and they said, "If we wanted to tax ourselves to that, so that we could get that fire engine, would you be open to it?" And that really was the, uh, the beginning of FP5. It was a service home created by the people of, of Hellendale who said, "I want to pay to get a basic level of service." And so, um, FP5 is different than FP6, which is Havasu Landing, I think they're about a hundred and thirty-nine. Red Mountain, which is off the three ninety-five corridor, another community that said, "We want to pay more for service," they're at about a hundred and seventy-three, and so, it's just, uh, El Mirage is at nine dollars a parcel, so it does, that's, uh, just, uh, through the process in each community, that's what they came up with.
Okay, and so, the fact that the city of Grand Terrace owns its station doesn't enter into the cost factor at all, you're strictly looking at staffing?
Well, we're looking at running, that keeping the lights on and maintaining the station, and, 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 um, everything associated with it. So, staffing is a large part of the cost, but then you talk about just vehicles and equipment, um, maintenance, that kind of thing. It, it, like I said, varies anywhere between two and two-point-five million dollars throughout the county, depending on the, the condition of the station, how much maintenance, how old it is, and, and how many people are stationed there, quite frankly.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for being here and for your report, and I'm going to return it to Mr. Duffy, if you have more on this item?
Only just one point of clarification to the mayor's question. So, when you do your two-point-two million dollar model, um, you have a cost for the three, uh, three-man staff twenty-four hours a day, and her question was, in that two-point-two million dollars, which is basically an average across the different locations for a station, do you factor, are you factoring in the cost of the station? And if the city of Grand Terrace owns that station, is there a difference in the cost for that particular station?
There's really, uh, the biggest difference comes in, into how much we would contribute to replacement or, uh, improvement. So, for a forty-year or fifty-year life span of a station, you're going to go through two or three roofs, and you're going to go through two or three HVAC systems, and so to the extent that we would be putting money away, under the best circumstances, for a capital improvement or replacement, that's figured in. Um, and then, just the maintenance and utilities are, are part of running the fire station.
So, so we should get together and have that conversation, because I think that some of those costs that you're talking about, we're, we're actually supporting those costs. So, we'll get, we'll, we'll get together and get a better understanding of what that...
And you did ask for a roll-up, so we roll it up to two-point-two, two-point-two-ish million dollars, but we have a breakdown, of course, on this spreadsheet, and we can make sure that you have that here at the city council, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I just have one final question. Uh, you mentioned the forty-three million dollar reserve that was in place at one time, and I just want to make sure I understand what that number is today, as you stand here before us.
Unrestricted reserves, so we have some accounts, termination benefits, um, some equipment, um, required equipment accounts that we are, are restricted, what we would refer to as restricted reserves, but our, our unrestricted reserves will fall below what, uh, four million dollars this year, district-wide. Now, people say, "Well, Mark, you told us last year that it was going to fall below six million, and it ended up at eight million, what happened?" Well, I would say good budgeting, um, the, the stations are held accountable to make sure they end up in the black, and when you have sixty stations, you can get a, a couple million dollars in the black every year. The other thing is property taxes. We budget conservatively on property tax revenue, and occasionally it comes in a little bit higher, and we have a higher fund balance because of that. Doesn't mean we spend more money, it just means at the end of the year, we have a little bit more money in the fund balance account, because we had a little bit more revenue. But that's primarily, um, um, essentially the differences between our, our fund balance year-to-year or our reserve accounts, but we do expect to be about four million dollars, and that's really the urgency of this meeting today. We're twelve million dollars short. Twelve million we had last year, twelve million we won't have next year in our reserve account to make up that service difference.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I do have one question.
Mayor Protim.
If I listen to you correctly, you're, the health and safety code that you're, uh, using to annex this doesn't require a protest hearing. You're doing that, uh, as a courtesy?
Requires notice to the property owners and a public hearing, and yet, we heard loud and clear from our board that they would have no way to gauge without some tool, and that's correct. So, the health and safety code, uh, allows the expansion to maintain or improve services. In our case, it's to maintain those services, and then they, all they require is notice to the property owner and a protest hearing. Yes, ma'am?
All right, Mr. Duffy, did you have more on this item?
I do not, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, so at this time, Mr. Duffy, are you looking for, uh, direction from staff or from council?
The overall impact for, the overall goal with staff was, was, we received direction to have a public hearing, to alert the public, and have the council have a discussion about the item.
Okay. So, Mayor Protim, did you have comments you wanted to make?
Well, when I read the agenda, it says, "And provide direction." Okay, so, this is, this is my, and I, I have to, um, say, I worked for the special districts department, and I left there in, in two thousand and one, and I worked in budget and finance. I didn't handle the fire budget, but I was present during, um, what, what occurred, you know, uh, so, when we had, um, the Great Depression, the, the, the government, the state government took back fifteen percent of the educational augmentation fund, and then they took the entire amount, so then the fire districts were then scrambling for, for more revenues. Um, at that time, there's, uh, county service areas have different powers, and some had park powers, and some had fire powers, and the sad thing, and, and then, and this, you know, is also, wh- when we sit here and talk about the scarce dollars we have, that some people in the audience believe that we just have fluff all over the place, um, but when we're dealing with the scarce dollars we have, um, there, you know, there's a little bit that we wanted out there in the community benefit fund for sports leagues, or for youth recreation, or for, for enhanced senior services, but what happened, when, when people are, are, are looking for more money, the CSAs that had park powers were stripped of the park powers, so all that money would go into the fire district. So, even though, um, when we're talking about Prop thirteen and the freezing, it froze whatever the contribution rates at those areas, so some had twenty-six percent, some had ten percent, blah, blah, blah. So, sure, like Councilmember Wilson says, you know, there's the growth, but, so really, the elephant in the room is Gray Davis's act to change pensions, and, and we're all dealing with that in some fashion or another. What I don't understand, as a Grand Terrace resident, and now as, as a councilperson, is why we allowed our governing authority to go away. We had a long-term relationship with, with, um, with the, um, California Department of Forestry, and looking at all the materials that, that staff provided, um, it isn't clear to me why we're not still with, um, uh, the California Department of Forestry, because so much of the year, they were here anyways, doing their, um, state mandate, state responsibility area, to make sure the watershed was protected, and then those areas that they were, were off-season, then cities like us could, could contract with them for year-round service. So, just to go back a little bit, what's facing the residents, you know, we have October of sixteenth, where the residents can go and do a protest, um, and then, you know, we will know from that one, one path. I'm thinking that in the interim, we need to start looking at, um, the potential for, um, detaching from possibly county fire, uh, from possibly looking to see if anybody nearby can provide service, because, you know, we have, we're such a small city, so if we can contract with, 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 with the city of Colton, or even the city of Riverside that has a fire station, that I'm sure would be the same thirteen minutes that we're looking here, it might be something worth looking, looking into. I think also, my comment for the board supervisors is, it really needs to have another global look at this, um, and maybe the state needs to be involved and, and take a, another different global cleanup of maybe what, what fire protection should look like in county areas. Also, I'm going to end with this, we're going to have to be a little bit careful, because we only generate one million for fire. I was reading, um, the city of Barstow had, uh, an independent fire protection district. So, they got rid of that special district and brought it in-house. Well, the fire protection people were not getting paid what the county fire employees were being paid, so then that brought up their costs, and now that's coming out of their, their general fund. So, we have to be careful, because we already aren't providing the safety, sheriff's safety protection that, there, there's some feeling in the community that we need, so, you know, we have to be very careful as we proceed, but I think we definitely have to take some steps parallel to what's happening in the county, to see if we have any options. That, I think, is, is what our due diligence requirement is for, for our residents.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Councilmember Wilson?
One quick comment also, packet page eighteen, sixteen, I'm sorry, can't see anymore, I'm getting too old. Uh, over a ten-year period, it's not just, uh, the, uh, parcel tax itself, but you're also looking at a thirty percent increase. And I've got to think a portion of that's, it also relates to a three percent annual, which would go towards pension costs, so. So, you know, the overall cost on this is, I, I think I, I think I agree with, uh, Mayor Protim Robles, that it'd be a good time to start looking at our options.
All right, Mr. City Manager, you started down the path of ideas, and that is in our packet. Do you have any costs associated with these other alternatives?
Well, you know, after reviewing the, the different types of ways in which the multiple cities deliver their services, there are combinations, as the fire chief said earlier, uh, the city of Fontana, the reason why they ended up doing their, uh, uh, standalone is because they generated a significant amount of revenue, but yet they're still contracting with San Bernardino County Fire. Calamasa was one that, that was able to provide their own services, because they don't have labor contract issues, uh, they're, because they're internal. Uh, part, you know, part of the issues that most agencies and either the Cal-Pers Associate Agencies have, and/or the county have, is the unfunded accrued liability. So, in, uh, the city of Colton's case, if you look at their particular budget, uh, they have some significant unfunded liability, but Loma Linda doesn't have that same, same issue, but yet Loma Linda and Colton have a partnership together where they share the, the executive staff, and there's no many chains between hands, but they have a, a sort of a co-leadership going on in, in the organization. So, there are a number of, of ways which agencies are, you know, are sharing resources or finding alternatives, and so, as I started going down that path, just to let the council know that, that there are those options, and so, whatever the outcome, uh, what happens on October sixteenth, the council will always have that option to, uh, exercise with LAFCO, to either form a, uh, a, examine the formation of a separate fire district, whether it's a district that is standalone, or with another city within, uh, San Bernardino County, or even a partnership with high, high-growth Riverside County, because they're, they're closest neighbors. So, you always have that ability to take whatever resources that you have, and then go to LAFCO with those resources and try to form your, your own separate entity. So, if the council so desires for, for staff to look at those possibilities in the future, that's certainly a direction we can, we can certainly take up and, and move forward in that direction.
Well, I would like to know a little bit more about each of these options that you've outlined. Um, Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I agree with, uh, the comments that have been made by yourself, Councilmember Wilson, and Mayor Protim Robles. Uh, I think it's important for us to, to look at the options, but at the same time, I think we need to be honest with the citizens, and let them know that Grand Terrace generates one million dollars in property tax revenue for fire services. So, if we are going to consider other options, then the taker or the respondent to our offer has one million dollars to deal with, and you've heard from Chief Hartwick how that works out. Otherwise, Grand Terrace residents have no choice but to raise revenue in some form or fashion, to increase that million dollars, to provide us the level of service that we believe is, this, this community is deserving of. So, I'm firmly in support of looking at the options, but I don't want anyone to have, be, to misunderstand that evaluation process, and think that somehow, some way, um, another fire service agency is going to be able to provide the same level of service that the county fire district does for two-point-two million dollars a year, for the million dollars in property tax revenue that we generate as a community. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I, I think the, the idea is to, to see what it, what, what is available, what it costs, and how that compares with what we have right now.
Absolutely, we'll, we'll move forward in that direction to provide, provide you with that information.
Okay. Anything more? Did you want a, a vote on this item, or...
Um, if you, the council would like to, to vote on, as Mayor Protim says, giving staff direction to examine the potential options there are for, uh, ways to deliver fire protection services, that certainly would be helpful.
Would you like to make that motion, Mayor Protim?
I make a motion to direct staff to explore, um, different avenues for fire protection for the city of Grand Terrace.
Second.
Right, there's a motion by Mayor Protim Robles, second by Councilmember Henderson, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Henderson, Hesse, Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protim Robles voting yes, and Mayor Matnibo voting yes.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to item two, which is to receive a report and consider adoption of a resolution rescinding the submission to the voters, a parcel tax measure that would enable the funding of law enforcement services beyond the current two-hundred-and-eight deputy hours weekly for the general election to be held on Tuesday, November sixth, twenty eighteen. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, this item is to consider adoption of a resolution rescinding the r- submission to the voters of the parcel tax measure funding enforcement services beyond the current two-thousand-and-eight hours per week. Uh, I was contacted by a member of the council, and based on the current situations that we're, we're facing today, is to have the council reconsider this item. And what we have before us is, on May twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, the city adopted Resolution two eighteen nineteen, placing a parcel tax measure before the voters for November sixth, two thousand and eighteen, uh, which includes an eighty-dollar per single family, per household, per parcel, forty-five dollars per multifamily unit, and then a hundred dollars per non-residential property. But then we also had, on June twelfth, two thousand and eighteen, the county fire district set a hearing for October sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, to impose a hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-sixths parcel assessment, um, tax assessment, on each parcel in Grand Terrace for fire protection. in Grand Terrace for fire protection services. So faced with both of those particular items, that each household in Grand Terrace or each parcel in Grand Terrace would be impacted in the following way. $80 for city law enforcement, a parcel tax, $157.26 for a fire assessment of parcel tax, total of $237.26. So faced with that new information, one of the things we wanted to do is, due to competing parcel taxes and impacts on property owners, some members of the council requested the, uh, the idea to rescind Resolution Number 2819. And so with that, Mayor, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Are there questions of staff at this time? Okay. Is there any discussion to be had on this item? Councilmember Hussey.
Well, first of all, you know, I want to thank the residents who went out there and Ms. Forbes, Johann, got signatures and let, informed the public what was going on with our sheriffs, you know, it's been a long fight for them. I know some haven't been here that long, but, you know, we're trying to make cuts before and sometimes it doesn't go through and different ways, avenues to look at it. Went to a, went to a meeting with the, the union and this thing with San Bernardino couldn't come at a worse time because found out San Bernardino is also charging us extra for the sheriffs to pay off their unfunded liabilities and stuff. So it's just, um, looking at it, you know, knowing we wanna, people know we need those sheriffs and we know we can't keep every year trying to find money for, and this was a, at least a five-year solution for a big term that's gonna happen when we have Luis and all the other development, and I think it would've worked out great. But we also had to be cognizant with, uh, some people are on limited income, fixed incomes and they, you know, and they're counting every dollar. And as a council and, and then the residents, they don't want to put people in a bind. But we still need to keep all options open on the table. I mean, we could revisit this, like Ms. Forbes said, she's gonna, you know, go out and get petitions again, you know, something, hopefully we could figure something out with the city fire. I mean, I think this was the best case. I mean, of course, I think the best case would've been, uh, the tax that wouldn't hurt anybody was the tax as far as the sales tax, that would've been something and that wouldn't hurt people's budget. This would've digged into their budget, but unfortunately, we didn't have the overall votes for that. Maybe later on down the line, if that happens and we tried all our resources and we have the votes, you know, because it's not election year, I'll put my name up here during election year, it's not about the politics, it's about protecting our community and protecting our, um, men and women in uniform. That's all it's about, it's not a, you know, this is not a career job for me, but it's just, this is my community and I'm concerned just like everybody else. So this is just one more bump in the road that we had to take, so it's, it's time to pick and choose our battles and it's time to regroup and maybe come back so we could win this war and for the overall good of this community. You know, I just, once again, I want to thank everybody, I want to thank the residents who signed the petition and their concerns and everybody else's concern about it. But, you know, one thing I know about being on the council, you know, like Mayor Protim said, there's not a, we don't have a duck in the back laying a golden egg. We pinch every penny, we count every bean, as Miss Fortune always says. Um, staff salaries, you know, we're competing, you know, the biggest thing that hurts this state is, of course, the Calpers, that unfunded liability. You know, my go on the council while I'm here, I like to be debt-free and have our full-time sheriffs, I love to have the two sheriffs and the traffic officer. We also gotta think what, you know, what the county's doing to us. When the county came up with this fire, you know, they're in the same boat we are, you know, the costs, costs go up. Retirement's going up, you know, this thing for 3% at 50 and 55 was for the first responders who put their life on the line and their life expectancy isn't that long after they retire. And then somehow, some way, other people got on the bandwagon and got part of that retirement. I don't know how, but that's just how it works, so. We have a lot of things ahead of us and, you know, I don't want to say this is totally dead, but it's just not the right time right now. And, um, ten and a wolf, you know, hopefully you could figure stuff out with us and work with Mr. Duffy. You know, I know the residents still want, a lot of residents still want to do this, but they can't, you know, afford both of them. Maybe later on, people will vote for, our council will come to a mutual agreement on a property, not a property tax, but a sales tax like Riverside did with their measure Z, because they figured out, hey, we gotta pay for our fire, we gotta pay for this, costs are going up, this gets everybody who comes to our city, we're at the lowest tax, sales tax, and this doesn't put a burden on anybody. So that's just my comment, Mayor, but I want to thank everybody again for their hard work. Thank you.
Did you want to make a motion on this item? Councilmember Hussey.
Before that, Mayor, I have a comment.
Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In this council and the community, just heard from the fire chief, the budget straitjacket that the district is dealing with. And it's the straitjacket that this city council and prior city councils have been dealing with virtually since incorporation. And it's not important and there's no benefit to pointing the finger in the past because this council is charged with managing the city's financial affairs to the best of its ability. But the community needs to understand that we can't continue to keep doing the same thing and expect the same results. Since at least 2011, members of this city council, the mayor, the Mayor Protim in particular, and Mr. Wilson and Mr. Hussey, uh, since they came on the council, have been making cuts to our budget every year to balance the budget. And they've done it successfully, and so there's this expectation that that process will continue. And I will tell you, from my perspective, it can't continue. We can't continue to do the same thing and expect the same or different results. So let's just talk briefly about the two-year budget that a majority of this council adopted. That two-year budget, prior to staff presenting a balanced budget to the city council, there was a $458,000 deficit. $458,000 comprised of $121,000 increase in the sheriff's services contract, $100,000 additional costs in pension, labor, pension obligations, and $237,000 that previously was charged to the redevelopment fund that can no longer be charged to the redevelopment fund because we've resolved the dissolution of our agency with the State Department of Finance. So you take those three numbers and you're talking about $458,000. That's before staff could present a balanced budget to the city council. So that occurred and a majority of the council adopted a two-year budget. That two-year budget, if you look at the numbers, this is not Ken Henderson's opinion, this is all a matter of public record. It shows approximately $168,000 in revenue increases from the current fiscal year to the next fiscal year, fiscal year 1819 and fiscal year 1920. Unfortunately, it shows $171,000 in expenditures, projected expenditures, meaning that, again, our growth in expenditures outstrips our growth in revenues. That's something that the community has to come to grips with because this is not new. This is not new, this is something that has been in place for years since incorporation. It was glossed over with the use of redevelopment funds when redevelopment funds were available to the city council, those funds are no longer available. So we must develop alternative recurring sources of revenue in order to sustain ourselves economically going forward, whether that's in, in the form of a parcel tax, whether that's in the form of, of dramatic, uh, economic development successes, one way or the other, we have to appreciate the fact that we need additional revenue. Robbing Peter to pay Paul is not a solution to any of our issues, let alone the most important issue of public safety. So I think the council's committed to finding solutions down the road. Everyone's got their heart in the right place, we might have different destinations, we might take different roads, but if we commit ourselves to this task going forward and we push and push and push again with respect to our economic development program, we can find a way forward. We can't continue to have a situation where our sales tax revenue last year was the same as it was 10 years ago. I mentioned earlier, if your household income remains static for 10 years and your household expenses increased over that 10-year period of time, you'd have to make some dramatic changes. Well, this council has made dramatic changes, council after council after council. So think about what you just heard from the fire chief and the fire district. That's not our situation, but essentially it's the same deal. This is the level of service that you want, this is the cost associated with it. This is the level of law enforcement protection the community wants, there's a cost associated with that. The only question is how we pay for that cost. But if you're expecting after closing virtually a half-million-dollar deficit to get to the balanced budget that we have for the next two fiscal years, if you're expecting another $350,000 to come out of that budget, I don't think that that is a realistic proposition. That's just my personal opinion, my colleagues may feel differently, but the point is, we all need to roll our sleeves up and, and get to the task of putting this community on the road to accomplishing Vision 2030. Because if we accomplish Vision 2030, particularly the economic development aspect of it, we then put our road, ourselves on the road to, uh, economic sustainability. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. Is it the desire of the council to address this?
I have some comments, please.
Mayor Protim.
Okay, you know, it's, um, it's important that we all get an opportunity to speak. I'm 1/20th of the, of the voice of the people and I feel like you, you know, it just needs to stop where, um, I don't get an opportunity to respond to, um, a gentleman's comments here about not having a second, you know, for some cuts. Um, so we have a sheriff's deputy that costs in excess of 200, 300 some thousand. There were some cuts recommended that were possibly about 112,000. One of them was 700, $7,000 for a, a birthday party, some code enforcement that everyone was a player on the discussions of that reorganization and where the savings would go, and code enforcement is also a health and safety issue. One of them was an assistant to our city clerk, and I want to tell our city clerk, you know, she had a tough day yesterday. You know, that, um, she has to deal with, um, uh, voting, um, special meetings here everywhere and, uh, you know, and it's a difficult task. And one of the, the solutions was, well, to cut support for her because everybody can just walk away from their jobs and become city clerk for the day. So I'm not gonna, uh, uh, sit here and listen to that when, you know, previous city councils had a childcare assist, uh, pro, that was working, that was taking general fund money every year, it was racking up unfunded liability pension debt every year, you know, and I sat here and I, I figured out what was going on and took action to stop that. So, you know, this issue that came up, we have Facebook City Hall. So Facebook City Hall for two years said, let's have a meeting on, you know, we need more, uh, police service. So then I'm being told, you know, off sidebar things, you know, that, um, certain people that are calling this meeting, want to call the meeting, but they don't want to have a tax. So then why are we calling a meeting? So what I'm saying is, you know, the citizens out here, you have an opportunity because you're not, um, tied up like we are. You know, there was a recent state Supreme Court decision that said, you can go and do an initiative process, you're not bound the same way we are. You can go and, and get people to support you and, and, and put it on the ballot. Um, you know, we will provide as much technical service as we legally can as far as, is it a special tax, is it a general tax, is it a sales tax? But this current council, as it sits, we couldn't even have a discussion on a sales tax. And whether the sales tax was more beneficial or not beneficial. We were ushered into, you have one choice. First on the menu was, here's a parcel tax. No, we need more options. So we got the more options and we still couldn't have a full discussion on them. So I'm, I'm, I'm really gonna be pushing for, and I'd like to see on a future agenda item, and I'd like to have another member support me, once we're, uh, through with this, uh, when we get to the city manager communications, is, you know, I want a poll on what the citizens want out there. Do they want enhanced police protection? Do they want to wait until the city is built out in the horizon of 2020? You know, I, I think we just can't sit here anymore and listen to a few people and say that's, that's the voice of the people out there, I think we need to know a little bit more. And I think it'd also be useful to, to the folks that want to go out and embark on the arduous task of getting people to, to sign a petition to know what the feeling is out there. But, you know, this, um, this has to have stronger legs than what we're currently at right now. Uh, we need to really know what, what people think. And I'll just end with, you know, it's very demoralizing to me, um, to go to a professional for some, um, service that I needed. And this is, you know, we, we worked hard for one-time money to, to enhance sheriff services. And so when I talk about, you know, um, well, there's gonna be a tax, you know, that we, we need more, and the feeling is, well, I see sheriffs, I see more than one sheriff, well, y'all just saw one more sheriff because we did extra money. You know, so we just really need to, to, to tie this down and I think a poll would help tremendously.
I'll support you on that poll, Mayor Protim. But what I would like to know is, are we going to let this, um, tax stand on the ballot at this time or is there the desire to make a motion to rescind it?
Who wants to do that? I'll make the motion to rescind the parcel tax for the November 6th, 2018 election.
I'll second that motion and at the same time, thank the citizens who were involved, particularly Bobby Forbes and Johann Gallo in the collection of signatures and the support of this endeavor from the beginning to end.
We have a motion by Mayor Protim and a second by Councilmember Henderson. Would you read the, uh, resolution?
Adopt a resolution of the city council of the City of Grand Terrace rescinding Resolutions 2018 hyphen 19, 2018 hyphen 20, and 2018 hyphen 21, which respectively, number one, placed a parcel tax measure before the vote voters of the City of, at the November 6th, 2018 general municipal election, requested the assistance of the County of San Bernardino in connection with that election, consolidated that election with the statewide general election being held on that date, set priorities for filing a written argument regarding a city measure, and directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis, and three, providing for the filing of rebuttal arguments for city measures submitted at municipal elections.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Henderson, Hussey, Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protim Roeblis voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
Thank you. We have one final item, which is a discussion on the city attorney interviews. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mayor and Council, um, as you guys are aware, we had a scheduling issue yesterday regarding the, um, interview process, and so we'd like to, um, talk about trying to reschedule those interviews. Um, I would suggest, if it's at all possible for the council to, um, schedule the date for, uh, August the 27th, that's a Monday. August the 27th. Um, that'd be the, that would be the first date that I would, I would like the council to consider. If not, we can, uh, try for the 20th. If not, we can try for the 20th.
I can be available either of those days.
Madam Mayor, I can be available on both of those dates as well, although my preference is the 27th.
Councilmember Wilson?
I'm good on both Mondays.
Mayor Protim? Councilmember Hussey? All right?
The 27th, then, Mayor.
If we can do the 27th, that would be great.
All right, thank you very much.
All right. And that's it? All right, so we will adjourn to our next regular city council meeting, which will be held on Tuesday, August 14, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. Agenda item requests must be submitted in writing to the city clerk's office no later than 14 calendar days preceding this meeting. Thank you. Thank you all for coming out tonight and for your participation.